Okay, I begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. You ready? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a motion approving the building board meeting minutes from December 5, 2024.
Vote.
Second. Any additions to the corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Are there any citizens who wish to comment on the agenda for tonight? Okay, then we'll move on to trustees comments. I don't know where I started last time.
Started with Eric last time.
Oh, then I'll start with Donald this time.
I'm just going to defer to the agenda.
All right, just gonna be our last meeting before the holiday season, you know, truly begins next week, just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, all that stuff. And for that, just stick to the agenda. I'm so nervous. Something bad's gonna happen.
You worry about patriots.
Oh, yeah.
We'll move on to Ruth. Cut him off.
I'll echo what Nate says, Happy Holidays to everybody and wish them a great 2025. And the agenda's good.
Wow, the agenda's changed three times in the last six hours.
There's another one coming.
Oh, yes. Hi, you're up, Meg.
Happy Holidays to everyone and I'll stick to the agenda, whatever is maybe.
I've got two ads here.
I have an ad as well, executive session for a litigation matter.
Okay. That's gonna be like K.
K. I had it as H, but...
Yeah.
Because I'm the first.
I know, but it seems like executive session in the middle, he kind of...
Yeah.
AJJ could do it. K.
Hello.
That's it.
It could be wrong and they only be...
You're set. Yep.
Okay.
So Happy Holidays, everyone, have a happy and safe holidays and I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, I would... I would like to add an item to the agenda. Whatever comes after G.
Usually.
And that will be a motion to appoint Jim Serenkowski to the ZBA as an alternate effective January 2, 2025. Probably will be a name familiar to most people in the room.
I bet so. ZBA, which is that case.
Yep, to ZBA. And... Item I, and I have to add to the agenda, a motion to adjust the compensation of the Associate Justice Teresa Hugel to $2,081.95 for the month of December. Yeah, and if I'd been thinking, I would've dropped the 95.
And we're just going forward, correct?
Going forward, that number will be different.
Okay.
Just, that's just for December, is that what you said?
That's for December.
That makes me K.
Pardon?
That makes me K.
Only if you have a third.
I don't have a third one.
It's not some... You're J, then.
It could be J.
Oh, okay.
No K. No, no K.
Okay.
And I wanted to extend a congratulations to the Christmas Bureau for bringing some holiday joy into several homes in our community. To me, this is one of the things that I think our village can be most proud of, is that every year, the community donates materials and stuff and Christmas Bureau gets it to people that otherwise might have a little less joyful holiday. It's kind of nice that our village does that, yeah.
I had the pleasure of helping pack toys yesterday for families, 120 families we served this year.
And that's all through the volunteer center, right?
It's all through the volunteer center, yep.
I think lots of centers confusion and the volunteer center wears many hats.
We do wear a lot of hats, but that is one of our programs.
That's a special Christmas hat.
And I wanted to wish a Merry Christmas and safe and happy holidays to all the staff and the residents of Baldensville. Other than that, I'm going to move on to depart.
I will stick with the agenda.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to let the board know that a couple of months ago, that an email came through from PERMA to sign up for a grant for free monitor and computer for training purposes, so I submitted our name and we won it, we got it. So just last week, computer was delivered and the other day, the TV was delivered, which is probably as big as that one behind Taren, and it's gonna be up at the DPW, so they will have something to train on, they all can do it together because not all of them have computers, so just wanted everybody that we won that.
I saw PERMA is offering a defensive driving course, maybe they shouldn't watch that. Anything else?
Nope, stick to the agenda.
Did everybody get the email from the clerk's office about the clerk's schedule?
No, I only sent it to you, that was just to you.
Okay. There will be a clerk in there all the time, not the same one.
Over Christmas.
I figured that's what you want. Except for Christmas Day.
Yes.
But, so the other days will be regular business hours?
Yeah, it's regular business hours, it's just either Melissa or I, you know, between the next two weeks, yeah.
If you don't find out where she is, just watch Facebook.
Okay, moving on to our treasurer.
I just have one thing, I don't, I don't know how to ask you to add something to the agenda because I'm not up, sitting up there with you, but we talked about that, the purchase of the DPW truck and the use of ARPA funds, and we're up against the deadline for ARPA. And so I'd like to get a motion tonight to approve the use of ARPA funds that unexpectedly have become available because of a potentially canceled project that's been going on.
So...
And we can talk more in detail about that if you agree to put the motion on the agenda.
Sure, we'll put item J back to work.
I'm sorry.
A motion to commit our ARPA funds, basically.
Yeah, commit ARPA funds or allocate ARPA funds for the purchase of a 2024 Ford F-150 pickup truck.
Anything else?
That's it.
Renee?
I just want to let everybody know that the senior center will be closed again the 24th and 25th, but we'll be resuming our normal duties on the 26th, and then on the 31st of December, we're gonna be having a little holiday party in the afternoon with some music at the senior center, other than that, we're just regular programming.
How late does the 31st party go?
3:30.
Oh, 3:30.
It's late early there.
It is, it's late early there.
It's supper time.
Or is that AM?
Well, you never know, you might have a few.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to DPW.
Just want to wish everybody Happy Holidays and throughout town, you will see, we have eight new radar signs, radar speed signs installed, so those are near to the village.
I thought those were holiday lights.
But other than that, stick to the agenda.
Okay, moving on to our chief.
Thank you, just want to obviously extend the thanks to Taren and his crew for getting those up, I had sent them over a list of locations entering into the village, so we can maximize the use of those eight signs. Again, the goal being traffic and pedestrian safety here in the village, which is one of, one of the paramount things that this board and certainly the police department is concerned with. Secondly, this is a tough time of year for a lot of people, especially folks to struggle with, you know, their mental health during this time, and there are services available, we unfortunately do see an uptick in our calls for people that are struggling during this time, and Liberty Resources, St. Joseph's Hospital and others have services available for folks, and we can certainly assist people in getting to where they need to be, and if they're in some sort of crisis during this time grid, oftentimes people feel alone, especially during the holidays, they might not have family and loved ones nearby, so this is something that we do deal with kind of regularly, and our staff will be here 24/7 over the next time grid, and I'll actually be working road patrol Christmas morning, so if you see me out there, this is the reason why, so one of our officers could be home with maybe young children, but I've got them ready to come in should the need arise, in case we run up against something that I haven't handled in a while and things, so I'm not, not as well versed as some in writing reports or working the in-car computers, but we'll get through, so other than that, unless there's questions, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to the agenda, pending business.
Yes, I would like to move that we tabled the motion to approve a proposed local law to amend Section 242 specifying regulations for food trucks.
Second.
And I'm just gonna add that this is on the ZBA's agenda to review that, so hopefully we'll have something at some point.
I'm gonna miss this.
Well, we each have our roles. Item, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on to item B, motion approving a proposed local law to change zoning district of property located at 48 Silas Street from its current designation of R1 to designation of B1 zoning district. I'll make a motion to table that. Okay.
Second.
We're never, we're not considering making it a B1, it just seems, I look at this...
No, I mean, I had proposed creating a special recreation district, as some villages have done, and with the idea that any adjacent, any other use or future use would be by special permit approved by the village board, and we really haven't gotten anything back from Trasher or anyone else on it, but they wanted to do some things with deeds, with restrictions and covenants and things like that, but those don't work, and really, it should be in the hands of this board to determine really what goes in there.
And you were suggesting a modified PDD kind of proposal. Do you think for this motion in the future, we should change it to a PDD?
Well, I mean, that's what's, the proposed local laws, before I, we can amend that, we'd have to have, before we do that, I believe we would have to have a new public hearing and put out a notice, so while it's, if we're in a situation where we can actually get some sort of agreement on where we had, then we go ahead and do that, and then there, you know, there shouldn't be any problem, but I think just tabling it now is fine until there's some sort of either agreement or, we'll see, Trasher's out of, he's, I don't know if he's on vacation or, but he's, he's away right now.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item C, motion for the mayor to sign the intermunicipal wastewater agreement between the village of Baldensville and the county of Onondah. I'll make a motion for discussion.
One second.
Okay, regardless of what you vote, I won't be signing it, because in my attempting to communicate with them, I did get communication returned to me, and as we dug through it, it requires a change in insurance, which would require an expenditure on the village's part, some kind of an environmental hazard insurance, so it would cost us money to sign this agreement, which the agreement itself doesn't offer us anything per se, and for some reason, they sent the letter out on the 3rd of December with a drop dead deadline of December 20th, in which case, by that time, we should have counted every manhole cover in the village, measured every, the length of our, all the information they wanted is a little onerous without really understanding anything other than, in this agreement, if we required the services of Onondah County to service our sewers, which we already have four people on payroll doing, they would charge us X amount of dollars to do it and do service at their discretion, as opposed to our discretion. So without them being gracious enough to return my phone call to discuss this, I would suggest that we vote this down personally.
I concur.
And then, you know, and if this is indeed something I wish to pursue, I don't know why we couldn't pursue it March 1st and sign a three-year agreement, but as opposed to, has to be done December 20th. That's a way. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay?
Nay. You make the pretty good argument.
The motion is therefore turned down. I assume I'll hear from them tomorrow. If those readd them, if they want to discuss it and explain things. Moving on to new business. This is where our agenda kept changing. Item A, motion to accept the resignation with regret of Judge Elijah Yuling Jr. as village justice effective December 31, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Anyone wish to make any discussion? I would like to point out, if you haven't, aren't familiar with the work that Judge Yuling has done, he has sat on this bench for some pretty significant cases, like I think of the Prichard situation that occurred in the village, he's been not necessarily lacking in controversy, but he has looked out for the welfare of our community for 30-plus years, so...
Could I comment here?
Please do.
Thank you. Yes, I was obviously working here when, when the judge was elected, which was a landmark situation in this village, really, to have a black man elected to this position at the time, and I've worked as a command officer here since, for the last 24 years. I haven't always agreed with his decisions, but that probably shouldn't be the case, the chief probably shouldn't agree with everything the judge does, and the judge probably shouldn't agree with everything that we're doing, that's, that's why they're elected there, but to your point, throughout his career, I think he's acted very, very professionally, and he's been attacked because of his race by people both within his race that you alluded to and people of other race, and he's represented this village very well, and certainly, he's earned his retirement, and I certainly, on behalf of the police department, appreciate his efforts to act as impartially and fairly to the people that have come through this courtroom over, over the decades that he's been there, and whoever takes that assignment will have some big shoes to fill.
Very good. Both figuratively and literally.
Yes, sir.
And we wish him the best. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item B, motion that the village of Baldensville accepts membership January 1, 2025 and authorizes the mayor to sign the 2025 amendment to the municipal cooperative agreement of the Greater Tompkins County Municipal Health Insurance Consortium as recommended by the board of directors. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Joe, do you want to say anything about...
This is something that we'll have to approve every year as we are in the consortiums, it's something that they require, and now that, now it's gonna be passed, I have to send the resolution and then your signature to them, I think it's by the end of January, but they want it in as soon as possible, so this is just formality that we'll have to figure out.
Is this saying I'm signing, something that is saying I'm gonna drive to Ethica once a year?
No, 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 that's different, you already signed that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carried. Item C, motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, January 2, 2025 at 7:30 PM to consider proposal, proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? I was thinking this is helpful to have Mark explain to the public what we're doing a little bit.
Well, the tax cap in New York State is a formula to, basically designed to control the growth of our tax levy and keep it at 2%, and there's a couple of things that create exceptions in there, you know, like if you have a year when real estate values go up significantly in the community or whatever, things like that, but, and it's recommended usually that we pass this local law every year, because if you exceed the tax cap and you have not postponed this law, then they make you, I think the penalty is that you, any additional taxes you collect above the tax cap have to be put into a reserve fund, I think that's what it is, for use in the next year, but if you've passed this law, you, you can exceed the tax cap, so many, many municipalities pass this kind of a law, and then, you know, our budget's not done, we don't know where we're gonna end up, and so we do this every year.
Thank you. And just as a sidebar, we all know the cost of living has gone up by more than 2% for all of the people.
As has retirement expense, as has medical premium expense, even, even just taking care of our employees and staff here, living within that is, is a challenge.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that'll be a public hearing where we discuss this further. Item D, motion to set a public hearing on Tuesday, January 14, 2025 at 6:00 PM regarding the adoption of the proposed 2025-2026 village budget.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? As Megan pointed out, the 14th is not a normal village board night, okay, so, and there's reasons based on dates that things have to be submitted by and stuff like that, so we're holding it, it's a special meeting that will be here that night.
I want to point out one thing, too.
Certainly.
The reason that it's at 6 o'clock is that that's planning board night normally, and so...
Gotcha.
You know, I don't think there's a planning board meeting on the calendar right now, but we didn't want to prohibit them from putting one where they normally would, so we stepped back an hour and said we can, we can do this before the planning board meeting in the event they schedule it.
And... Copies of the proposed budget will be available before then.
Correct.
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Back to January 2. Item E, motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, January 2, 2025 at 7:35 PM for modifications to the PDD for the Phobes Island development.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to mention one thing to the board, the proposals that came through for, initially for the change to the Phobes Island PDD were the changes that we made in June, and I pointed out that we'd already done what they, most of what they wanted us to do, and then we sent, we'd sent them back to the planning board for site plan approval, which took place Tuesday. In looking at what was sent to me and also talking with the representative, I discovered that his, what he had sent in his letter and telling us what they wanted changed in our code was the old code, and I took a look at the general code, which we all used, and found that the, the 2024 local law that we had adopted changing that PDD was not there. So I think that general code must do this only at the end of the year for the changes made by a municipality during the year, they don't do it as, as the changes are made, so I just wanted to point that out to the board members who might at some point be going online to look at general code, to look at the Baldensville code, to see what certain provisions are there, always keep in mind that if we made a change to them during the year, what you're gonna see is old news, so I just wanted to point that out, and so what we're going to basically do in this local law is refer to the new site plan, which was adopted this week, and I'd like to add a provision that says, as, as may be amended in the future, because otherwise, they would come to us, if they come back and have a minor revision and do a new minor site plan, they want to have a public hearing and change the local law, and I would rather just say, look, this is the site plan, if you have a minor revision, it'll be, it'll be effective, because it'll be approved by the planning board, so we wouldn't have to have public hearings and local laws for something that's not major as far as that's concerned, so that's, that's what'll be on the agenda.
And for the sake of the public part, this was driven, COVID factored into it, delayed the buildout of this project, and in the interim, FEMA changed the elevation of the floodway, which pushed things farther inland, and the original structures did no, no longer fit on the footprint of the property, so the developer came back, was something that approximates what was approved initially, I mean, in terms of number of residences and stuff, but a little different. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay. Could I have a motion to accept a gift of a snow blower, estimated value of $1,000 to the Canton Woods Senior Center from Jennifer Sullivan? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just point out, that's a, that's a gift to the village.
Correct.
Not, not the 501(c)(3), so it's our property.
And I would also add to that, that I'm counting on you guys looking at it.
Yes.
And if it needs new plugs or whatever to bring up the speed.
Will do.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Jennifer. Item G, motion to approve budget modifications as proposed in the document 2024-12-19, budget modifications for 2024-2025 budget.
A motion, motion, sorry.
Any second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Okay, must be, it was clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item H. Okay. Isn't it H?
Yep.
I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Jim Serenkowski to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate effective January 2, 2025. I'll make a motion, second. Okay, I made the motion, you can do that anyway. Any discussion? Okay, I submitted this to the zoning board chair for his review, and he enthusiastically said, wonderful, so, all in favor, we voted already, opposed? No, we didn't? Oh, yeah.
No.
Okay. Vote.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item I. Like a, I would like a motion, I won't make it this time, to adjust the compensation for Associate Justice Teresa Hugel to $2,081.95 for the month of December 2024. We'll move that.
I'll second, you'll second.
Discussion is that Teresa has been fulfilling the role of justice. farther back than just this month. But like I said, we would compensate her. She's been filling the whole role of justice. We have civil and criminal court, but she's been handling everything and hasn't thrown things at us or anything. So I would like to give her what her just rewards. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Carried. J. Boy, I scribbled something out. This is Mark's. Can somebody make a motion to allocate our funds?
For 2024 Ford 150.
For a what?
2024 Ford 150 truck. I'll make that motion.
And the amount of, do we have an amount?
And are we leaving the balance for another?
I think in the absence of some, you know, decision, I think we're going to have to, you know, we're just going to have to figure out what to do with the balance of that money. And I would, here's my, my instinct is that January 2nd, we could do, we could approve something and beg forgiveness that we missed December 31st.
What's the balance then, Mark?
It's probably $6,000 or $7,000. And to be clear what happened, you all, I think you know what happened. We had a project that was in process and the contractor has not performed. And we had those funds allocated for that project. And now the contractor is basically in default with a contract with us or whatever. And so rather than find out next year that they were never going to be able to finish the job, and now we've got $45,000 that's in limbo after the deadline and not knowing what would happen and what our right would be to reallocate that after the deadline, we said, let's allocate it now, let's spend it now within the window of the deadline. And then we'll take our chances with how the contractor is going to recover, if so, if at all. And there's a, you know, there's a performance bond in play there, all those kind of things. So we don't know where that's going to end up. And it could not end up being resolved for a long time.
Okay. If there was something in our budget that we were planning on acquiring like this pickup truck, would we apply it to some other pieces of equipment?
I would say yes. I mean, we got a call from another municipality today saying, you guys got anything you want money for? It's like, I think everybody's like, December 31st, we have to get rid of the money.
Use it or lose it.
I know. It's like, you know, it's a good, it's a good thing because it shows the program coming to an end and us getting back to some normalcy.
Yeah. I just didn't know if there's anything not too specific that we could allocate it to, like, village hall expenses? Because we talked of putting lighting in the parking lot, we've talked of other things. We talked of that text messaging thing.
We're supposed to have something a little more concrete than that. Again, these are circumstances that are.
We could say the balance will fund the mayor's win.
I'll call you when the editors get here.
So we have a motion. Did we get a second?
No, I will second it.
All in favor in using the upper funds for a pickup truck?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Did we get to K?
No, public comments first.
Oh. See, when you write down past everything, you're out of order. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this point after, about anything?
Darian Williams, Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce, pardon me. We've got a busy January coming up. We will start on Wednesday, January 8th at 10:00 AM with our coffee talk at Sullivan's MMA. And then three days later, on Saturday, January 11th at 11:45 AM, Sullivan's MMA is hosting a free 45-minute martial arts trial class, as Dylan puts it, for anyone from the ages of four to 100. You can sign up through a link on our website calendar, which is www.baldensvillchamber.com. Tuesday, January 14th at 11:30 AM is our monthly meeting. Excuse me, our monthly luncheon will be at Sal's Pizza. You can sign up from a link on our website calendar. Glad to see you'll be joining us, chief. Saturday, January 25th is the Beeville Big Chill, which is the annual fundraiser for the Chamber and Baldensville Rotary. Noon at Mercer Park, we'll have teams plunging into the river to compete for, I'd like to back up, teams plunging voluntarily into the river to compete for donations to the charity of their choice. We will have our Best in Bowl competition in the heated tent, which is where local eateries offer their best dish in a bowl. And thank you, Taryn, for setting up the meeting with us so we can tell you all about the chopping of the hole in the ice if need be. That evening, we have the Poker Bear Express Poker Run from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. That'll be at various locations throughout the village. All this information can be found on our website, www.bevillebigchill.com, or the Beeville Big Chill Facebook page. And then we'll end the month with an after-hours event on Thursday, January 30th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Strigo Vineyards. And again, information on our website calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, settling for Mechanic Street. I had a question. Last year, the wording on the town tax bill got changed from sanitation to sewer. And it was like half of my tax bill.
Is this on the village tax bill?
No, no, for the town. But it says sewer. And they said it was for the sewer connection. And every year, it's a couple of hundred dollars. But we also pay sewer to the water. So I was wondering how that overlaps or?
We all pay sewer. The Hiawatha Plant that sits down Boulevard Plant.
Okay.
Marked by the county. We all support that.
So the sewer we pay for the Baldensville is?
For all the pipes and everything that are in the ground.
Okay.
That transports it, the pump stations.
To go.
To get it down there.
Okay. I just wanted to make, because I'm like, wait, I'm paying sewer and I'm paying sewer. And I didn't understand the differentiation. And when I was asking them about it, they didn't understand the differentiation. So I thought you guys would know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board? You're the only two anyone else is in the room, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, this, you know?
I promised you I would say Merry Christmas at this meeting, so.
Now, can we do executive session?
Yeah.
Now, can I have a motion to move into executive session?
And a week.
I think we need Bob to be the chief.
And are you anticipating any action afterwards?
No.
Merry Christmas.
All in favor for that?